If everyone could please take their seats. The Chair will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201, being held Tuesday, January 26, 2010. Roll call, please.
Ms. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Charleston?
Here.
Mrs. Charlton?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Lubeck?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Tamis?
Here. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Let's talk first about the December 15, 2009 minutes. Does anybody have any comment? I would like to, if no one else has any comments, I would like to talk about page seven, about midway down. I know that, starting with Ms. Kelly, continue. I know that the minutes are not a verbatim transcript of what has occurred. However, I do have some concerns about the minute only discussing one part of a conversation. So without listing all the comments, perhaps that paragraph could be removed unless we would like to put in other comments that were made.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you said?
On page seven, right in the middle of the page?
Yeah.
Ms. Kelly, continue. Because there were more conversations and other people spoke. And again, these are not a verbatim transcript, but I think if we are going to have minutes that reflect what was said, we either have to reflect the whole conversation or summarize it differently.
What comments? Okay, what comments are you feeling that are important that are not there?
Well, that there were more, there were more comments other than the comment by Ms. Kelly.
Right, but what I'm asking is, is what other comments are you feeling that are, that are important that are missing?
Any of the comments that any other board members stated. It's on the, it's on the podcast. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that we start listing out everybody's comments. I'm just saying that if you have only one board member's comments when there was many other board members discussing it, I don't think it's an accurate reflection of written minutes.
But it's like that throughout the minutes. I mean, I think what, what we're trying to do is just have a summary of what are like the highlights or the most pertinent, you know, comments. Not that we're, like you said, trying to have a transcript. So are there, are there any particular comments that you feel are, you know, that you feel are pertinent or important that you feel need to be included?
Well, I guess that brings up a point as to what is pertinent and what is important if you're saying that some comments are more important than others. I just, I'm just saying that as the President who has to sign these minutes, I don't think this is an accurate reflection of the, of what the comments. Same thing with page nine at the bottom as well.
But what I'm asking, I think is, I think I'm not asking the question correctly. Are there, if you're bringing up the fact that you feel something else should be included, can you tell me which comments you feel should be included?
Okay, no, I do not have a line by line of what would be included. I'd be, I would be happy to do that. I'm just saying that I think as the minutes are stated, it, it is reflective that one board member spoke specifically, and it does not reference what other board members said. And I know, again, I know this is not a verbatim transcript. And if, if it would make a more accurate minutes, listing of the minutes, I would be happy to put something together.
I would like to interject here just for a minute. On page six, on the bottom of page six, it does talk that there was a discussion amongst all board members. I think it's very pertinent that Ms. Kelly's statements stay in here because her statement was made after the motion carried.
Right.
So I believe that's very important that it be here.
I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that it was stated or that it was there.
Because I don't recall anyone else speaking after the motion carried about the subject except for Ms. Kelly.
Well, you know what, if, my recollection is different. So if, if, if we would like to, I'm proposing one of two things, that we, I will be more than happy to go back and listen to the podcast and add a couple more sentences.
Well, you know what, I think that it's important that they stay concise.
Okay.
And I think what I generally see in the minutes is that whoever kind of starts a conversation, it's kind of noted, and then it often says a discussion ensued. And in this particular case, though, the discussion comments are before my comments.
Uh huh.
They're under the section about the calendar. And I think that does accurately reflect what all of the concerns were that were brought forward. So in the interest of just moving on, I mean, you know, if, if, if you feel like that has to be stricken, that's fine. I would not, I would not encourage us to start putting verbatim minutes in. But I, I would like to hear from everybody else because I think if you go through the minutes, you will see that, you know, Mr. Price stated such and such, or, you know, any of the board members state a comment about something, and the verbatim items are not put in there. And I don't think it's important that they, they are put in there.
No, and I, to interject and follow with what you're saying, like if you look on page eight, towards the last pair, at the bottom of the page, you know, it says, you know, "Mrs. Lubeck expressed several concerns about conducting school board meetings, et cetera, et cetera." And then, or if you look at, you know, towards, at the beginning, it says, "Mrs. Charlton, you know, referenced a letter, et cetera, et cetera." So I think as Kathy has pointed out, it just, it's kind of like whoever begins the discussion, that person's name is referenced. And then, you know, instead of referencing every single person's name who then continues in the discussion, we don't list each person's name. It just says then the discussion ensued and that sort of things.
And I, you know, Kathy, I appreciate that. What I'm saying is that as the Board President who has to sign this, I don't think I can sign something that states that there was something said just by one person just because that one person stated it. And I guess I'm not, I'm not really concerned with, you know, moving on. I'm more, I'm more concerned that there's an accurate reflection because I have the same comment on something on page nine because...
Well, is anyone, is anyone feeling that this is not an, other than you, is, is anyone else here feeling that this is not an accurate reflection?
I honestly don't recall. At a certain level, after the motion carried, I didn't, I don't recall if anything else was said or not. You know, for me personally, this was, you know, under the topic heading, you know, it would just seem sort of natural that, that after motion carried it, sort of, we moved on, but I honestly don't recall. I really don't. It was a very long night.
Well, let me go to the second thing then, page nine at the bottom. After, there was, under the, under, Ms. Kelly expressed her concern. Well, that is an accurate statement, but at that point, Mr. Charleston came in with some suggestions responding to that, and that is not noted in here at all. And so I'm saying the same thing here. I think we either have more than just that it was brought out, you know, other than a discussion ensued, that just is not an accurate reflection of what was stated. And I don't feel comfortable having minutes that are, that are that way. And I do very, completely understand that this is not a verbatim transcript, and I don't want it to be a verbatim transcript. I'm just saying if we're going to have a minute, we're going to have minutes, then they should be accurate.
I don't, I actually don't have a problem with the way seven, page seven reads. I remember a conversation happening afterwards. I don't remember who all commented. I think that that's consistent with the way the minutes have appeared. If you have a recommendation for not, page nine, if you could give that to us, and then we could decide if we wanted to add that or not.
I'm happy to do that.
That would be my suggestion.
I'm happy to do that for both of them, if that's, if everyone agrees. I'm happy to do that.
Excuse me, do you want to wait?
Yes.
You mean, approve them?
Yes, because I, if, if the suggestion is, and I am fine with that, I'll do that and hold this up to the next meeting, these minutes.
I'd just like to comment that I don't think that this is, that's a consensus of the board.
I agree.
That you should go back now and add all of this stuff to the minutes. I don't feel like there's a consensus.
Oh, no, I'm not saying I'm going to add, no, no.
If she could bring a recommendation so the board could review the recommendation, not to add to the minutes, not to change the minutes.
Does everybody feel like that's necessary?
I think Diane's suggestion was to leave page seven as it was, and for Marie to come back with a suggested change or correction for page nine, is that correct, Diane?
Or addition, or whatever you were looking for there.
I guess I would take it that I would, I would like to do the same thing for page seven. So.
Okay. What, what would your change be to page nine, just out of curiosity?
That Mr., to, to page nine?
Yes.
That Mr. Charleston made two suggestions about Mrs. Kelly's suggestion about the meeting.
Well, you know what, at this point, with all due respect to the entire board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. And, yeah.
I agree, it's ridiculous.
Just vote.
I agree.
That's kind of where I'm at right now, and then whoever doesn't think that that's a good idea can vote against it. And I think that's the proper way to make this decision about whether or not the minutes are amended.
Okay, then I guess that will be something we will have to take up in, okay, let's vote then. Let's vote.
I'm sorry, we're just voting on the fifteenth?
On the December 15th.
Yeah.
Minutes as presented in our binders at this point. All in favor of the minutes as they're written?
Is this a roll call or is this just a voice vote?
It's usually a voice vote.
Voice vote.
Okay.
All in favor of the minutes as written?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
There's things I just didn't recall.
Okay. Okay, and then just for the record, I will, as, I will have to discuss this with council in terms of my signature on this. I will take that up with council. Minutes for January 12, 2010.
One abstention. It was four, two to one.
Four, two.
But we have the closed session for December 15.
Oh, you want to do the next? I was just going with what's in the book. Okay. I'm happy to do that. Let's do the, let's look at the close, the minutes of the closed session of December 15.
We've got too much to talk.
The Chair will entertain a motion to admit the minutes of the closed session as written. Oh, is there a second?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried for the close minutes of December 15. The minutes of the, next thing is the minutes of the January 12, 2010 meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting. Any comments? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 12, 2010.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. All approved?
Aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay. And all opposed. The minutes, we'll next look at the minutes of the closed, no. Closed session. The, I'm sorry, in the book, the minutes of the special meeting, January 13. Chair will entertain a motion to approve those minutes, January 13, 2010.
Close, 12, January 12, first.
Where's the 12? We just did that one.
Closed.
Close. Open, you need to be closed.
Okay, hold on.
Do you want to do 12, 13, 14 at one time?
Okay, there we go. Yeah, let's look at 12, 13, and 14 at the same time. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session, January 12, January 13, January 14, 2010.
So moved.
Your second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain from the 12s, and aye for the rest.
Now, did we do just the closed or the open part of January 13 and 14 as well?
I'm sorry?
Did we do the, we, what did we, we did closed or open of January 13 and 14?
It was just closed.
There's two, okay.
It was just enclosed.
Okay. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the special, the meeting of, the minutes of the special meeting of January 13 and January 14.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I have three cards here. Mr. Bob Reed, would you like to come up and voting?
My name is Bob Reed. I only have two comments I wanted to make. One is, I'm assuming the agenda is on the playground at Miller School. I'd just like to say that I'm for that.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I'd just like to say I'm for that, for the reconstruction of the playground at the Miller, Miller School. It is old and obsolete. And the second comment that I would like to make is about changing the name of the junior high school. I'm strictly opposed against that. I think we could use that money in other ways other than changing every name and thing that's in the books and the name of the school and all the papers that they've got to go through. Economy is bad. It's a lot of money just to spend, just to change a name. Teachers need more money, we need more teachers. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Sullivan. I'm here representing Manning PTO. First of all, I want to applaud the board for making efforts to look into the South School playground equipment and making necessary changes there, as I know you guys are voting on that today. What we're interested in is possibly forming a committee to look into the same kind of safety issues that we may have at Manning School, as well as to look into any ADA efficiencies that we may have at Manning School as well as it relates to our playground. We would ask the district to support us in that effort to, to ensure that Manning also has the same kind of facilities as it relates to safety and ADA that Miller, or, excuse me, South School would, would have.
It's Miller.
Miller School, I'm sorry. Sorry. I gave the two kinds, sorry. That's all.
Okay, thank you. We will get back to you on that. And one more card. Michelle, if you could pronounce your last name.
Ginyard. This is not about the agenda, is that correct? I'm able to speak?
You can, it's public comments, yes.
My name's Michelle Ginyard, and I've recently moved out of the city, out here. Don't hold that against me. And previously, I used to be competitive in swimming and track, and in the city, I had a triathlon club for at-risk kids and a performance group. And I've coached high school track as addition to previously being a businesswoman. And now I'm embarking on my new career out in the suburbs, and I would like to have a Westmont Youth Track Club. And I'd like to have access or pay to use the Westmont High School track during the summer months, and the practices don't start until five o'clock. I contacted the school to try to get an idea of how to go about doing this, and I was directed in strange places. And so I'm coming to you, asking you to support my efforts, the same as the wonderful Westmont Swim Club that my daughter's on. I would like to do the same, offering children an opportunity to boost their self-esteem, and there's academic standards, and I have the parents involved, and we do community service. And I'm asking you for your support and possibly some guide, guidance in how to go about doing that in Westmont.
Thank you. We'll get back to you. Thank you. You have your information on the card?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? The next item?
I'm sorry. Before we go on, Dr. Ball, could you just address the question of where she would begin?
Right. Really, the person you need to call is just our business office. All right. The number is 630-468-8000. And tell them what you want to rent, and they'll address it.
Okay.
All right? Good work.
Anybody else? The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda?
A couple of people asked that a couple of items be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
So I'm going to suggest that we remove item four and item seven.
I would also like to discuss five. Anybody else here? Any comments on anything other than four, five, and seven? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, items one, I'm sorry, as amended. Personnel recommendations, approval of student tour request, approval of intergovernmental agreement for emergency siren, adoption of resolution to dissolve the DuPage Career Education Center joint agreement, and ratification of regular payroll. So moved. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Lubeck?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Tamis?
Yes.
Do we now hold off on some of that?
It's up to you. Go ahead and do the calendar issues now if you want.
Yeah. Let's do the calendar issues now. Let's look at number four. Approval of the 2010, 2011 school calendar.
Well, I requested that that be removed from the consent agenda because I would just, I would just hope that all the members of the board had a little bit of time to think about this item since we last discussed it, and to really decide whether or not that this is the best thing to do for our students. I, I mentioned that I thought the best thing to do was to go with kind of the plan we had developed a couple of years ago to move the school year forward for academic reasons, and cited some information that we had received from staff regarding average temperatures between June and August, evening out of the semesters in terms of curriculum and things like that, and that I really wanted the board to consider those recommendations. And at that time, the majority of the board was against it, and I had just hoped that between now and then, some people had a chance to maybe hear from more community members or to rethink the important pluses to, to the way the calendar was, the direction that the calendar was moving to. So I just would like to, to revote on this, if we could.
You want to revote on?
On the calendars presented.
The only way that a revote could happen, according to Roberts' rules, is if somebody brings that to the table that voted in the majority.
Well, we took it off the consent agenda for approval.
Oh, okay.
So here we are about to approve it.
About to approve it, okay.
And so I would like to vote on whether or not we are going to approve it. That's what I mean by vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody want to comment?
Well, I mean, Linda, I appreciate, you know, your concern, and Kathy, and Kathy, I know you guys looked at, at the issue. At the time, when, when it came up a couple of months ago, I think I had mentioned that, you know, I really hadn't talked to terribly many people. I have talked to more since. I don't know if it's a lot. I don't know if it's representative, but, but more than, more than I had before. Additionally, you know, Kathy, thank you for asking Dr. Ball to send around, you know, the, the information that you guys did look at last year related to, you know, in particular, the temperature issues. Because this whole calendar thing is, is kind of a funny thing with respect to a unit district, right?
Right.
Because there's some ISAT issues about whether or not instruction earlier in the year is more effective and its impact or not. But it's a unit district, and so we have a couple of buildings in particular at the elementary level that aren't air-conditioned. And so the question becomes on the, on the weather, what does early June like feel as compared to late August? And so one of the things we did was we looked at average June temperatures, and late June is different than early June. And we looked at August temperatures, and, and early August is different than late August. Among the temperatures, just the temperature issue, the average temperatures, I think, were one degree different, call it 80 and 81. But the humidities were different, and the average low temperatures were different as well. So you started the day warmer, you started the day more humid. So from, from a temperature perspective, you know, I'm, you know, and take an 81-degree day and a median temperature, neither are ideal in, on air-conditioned buildings. And I would argue that if, if the temperature is 80-whatever degrees outside in an un-air-conditioned building, it's hotter. In a humid building, it's hotter. So from, from a pure, if, if it's just a, if it's just a weather conversation, I still lean, because I'm a unit district with 600 or more of my students, my youngest students in those environments, I lean to the late start.
If I can...
With respect to the high school, you know, the high school and the junior high are air-conditioned. So, and, and part of DuPage going, and DuPage High Schools going to that has to do with both having tests before the end of break, and the fact that, you know, every high school that's gone to it is in an air-conditioned environment. Ours would be in an air-conditioned environment. So, you know, effectiveness of instruction sort of is, is a muted conversation either way, you know, from my point of view. The hardest part is this, from my vantage point. I can't empirically point to anything that says, "This is better. This is worse." The feedback I have gotten favors far more strongly the calendar that we have in front of us with the August 25 start and a June 3 end, the week after, after Memorial Day, than it does the early start with the end before, before Memorial Day. So, you know, and I realize it's not the answer you'd want to hear, but I hope you realize that I've given it a whole lot more thought, and I have talked to, you know, a lot more folks about it. And, and given the uniqueness of a unit experience, the uniqueness of our two elementary buildings, as well as the fact that, you know, there's a lot... as well as the fact that, you know, there's a lot of other complications to that trend toward early start and, and the lack of, you know, just, I get that there are professionals who say, including Dr. Ball, whose professional opinion is that an early start makes for a better instructional environment. There are clearly competing views to that. I don't know that anyone's won the argument. And so I hope you, I've thought about it. And here I sit. And this calendar works for me. So with that said, I'm done. I just, I just wanted to let you know sort of what I, my thinking and, and sort of where I was.
Sure.
Excuse me, I'll just add, you know, I did, after that meeting, I did want to check out the temperature issue to a certain extent, at least what you could do from your own home. And there's calculators on the National Weather Service website that allow you to calculate out the heat index and stuff. And when I looked at the two timeframes, beginning June, late August, it was about, worked out to be about five-degree difference instead of the one degree that we've talked about as far as the average temperature when you factor in the humidity. I also, I know the goal was to have finals before Christmas, but just having gone through the holiday season, it just reminded me how absolutely hectic that time of year is for everybody with all the programs and music programs and things that the kids are involved in. And then now we're going to have them study for finals during that very, very busy month of December prior to Christmas. So that just kind of stuck in my mind, I guess, as we had talked about that issue.
I have given it thought. You know, I did go home and I looked back over the material, I had talked with, that when Dr. Ball had sent it out to everybody. I didn't treat it lightly. I haven't gotten a lot of negative feedback on the decision to keep the calendar what's before us. And based on that, my vote stands also.
And then I'll follow up with, again, I would like to say thank you to Kathy for asking Dr. Ball to give us this information of what the board had previously looked at. And a couple of things struck me because I, again, did the same thing, thought about this. And number one, I, I don't have any educational information in front of me. I don't see any data, hard data, that shows that taking tests after the holidays is better for students than before. And I wasn't presented with anything that night as well. Some of the comments I heard that night was that it might be better for family time over the break. And I think I came to some conclusion at some point, like Joel did, I don't know about what everyone else does, but I know in, in our family with children, right before the Christmas holidays are much stronger than after in terms of timing. Second, in terms of the information that was given to the board in the past, two things came out. The discussion about the, the temperatures. What was given to the board was information about the weather at the DuPage Airport. And I think while I can take that for what it's worth, I don't think that discusses what it's like in the classrooms without air in August. And so I was frankly, I, I don't even see that as a one-degree or two-degree. It's just incredibly different inside a building with young students trying to learn. And then the other thing that's in here is that I think we heard that there was a survey done. And according to this information here, it states that the superintendent had spoken with staff and that there was maybe twenty individuals beside WTA officers. I don't know that that's a survey. I mean, one of the things that I particularly asked for at that last meeting was if we could survey the teachers. And what it says in here, in the information, was that the WTA officials position as that they prefer the August twenty-sixth start date, but that if an earlier date is considered, they would look into that. So to me, and the other thing too, is over the break, I've been looking and I noticed that other schools like Downers North and stuff, they're all studying for, for finals just when our students were. So I think in, in conjunction with the information that was provided to us, I think it even solidified my position even more.
I think that in that information, it stated that if they had to choose between having, had something to do, Dr. Ball, you can help me out here, if they had to choose between having the finals before and then not starting right away or something right after the break and not starting with the, the new semester right after break, was that on it?
They were not in favor of that option.
Right. I think that is what they were not in favor of.
Well, reading from this document is the WTA does not like the concept of exams before break, but ending the semester after break.
But the staff, there was staff members that, that definitely were in favor of it. And the reason that they were is that what happens is, is when they take the finals after the break, they end up spending two weeks practically relearning and having to study and help their students study for two weeks to relearn what they lost over the two weeks' break. And they lose that two weeks of teaching time. And I think that that's why they felt that it was important. And not only that, I think that there is research that shows that students who take finals before the break do perform better. Is that not correct, Dr. Ball?
Well, I think any case where you have more time, you know, more time of instruction before exams, you're going to be in a better situation. I do not know of any studies that have been done specifically that talk about, you know, with a cohort that took the exams before break or after break necessarily seeing a difference. I know that many principals will tell you that moving exams before break has had a very positive impact on both the culture in their building and on the exams, but I don't think any of them have, you know, done empirical research to, to identify that.
So it's just.
Clearly their professional opinion, their professional opinion and their experience is clearly that it's better for, for students.
Okay. So at any rate, I appreciate you all taking the time to look at the information that was presented and giving it your, your thoughtful consideration. And, you know, at the time, we felt that it was something definitely worth considering, especially because the test scores were something that we knew was a concern of everyone and, and just wanting to try something that we felt would be an academic benefit, especially to the students at the high school. So we hope that it's something that we'll get consideration again in the future.
You know, I think that's a good point. If there, I think this would be something that maybe we could look at again in the future if there is real data to look at to make this decision. That would be something that, you know, a couple of years down the road, we could certainly look at.
And informally, I mean, we've talked about the notion that, you know, the finals question is a high school question. And so I don't, you know, philosophically, I don't mind the notion of talking about a high school calendar against a K through eight calendar. It's, obviously creates some administrative issues. But, yeah, I think for, for purposes of kids doing better on a final exam because they haven't had that two-week break, that's an intuitively compelling argument. So many other things play into that, right? And so an empirical, an empirical would be hard. Students are different, environments are different, everything is different. So if it's not hard, it would be almost impossible.
I think you could track students too, to see how they perform, you know, really. If somebody wanted to take their time to do it.
At a certain level, I'd be, I'd be, you know, really open in the future to a conversation about, hey, look, should we, should we look at the high school schedule, you know, bifurcated, if you will, from K through eight.
And what would be the, I mean, I guess when finals are, is that really a decision that gets made by the board every year? Or is that a decision that could be made at the building if they wanted to have unbalanced semesters and still have finals before Christmas?
Makes it hard to cover all the material because the semesters are unbalanced.
With semesterized courses at the high school, that becomes effectively, you know, undoable unless you're going to have a couple of weeks of the semester after exams, which in discussing with the high school teachers, they definitely would not want to do. They feel that would be wasted in instructional time.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, why don't we, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the, the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school calendar that's in front of us.
So moved.
So moved. Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Is this, well, this is a consent agenda item, so do we need a roll call on this? No.
No, because it's, okay. Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
Mrs. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
No.
So the motion carries. Then we, the two thousand ten through two thousand eleven school calendar begins on the first day of school for the students, August twenty-fifth, last day tentatively June third, two thousand eleven. The next item then is number five, the approval of the two thousand ten to two thousand eleven board meeting schedule. I had called Steve about what's in front of us and what we had previously voted on was that May eleventh was a regular board meeting and May twenty-fifth was a student recognition. And did you want to talk to that? You said you wanted to change that?
Since the graduation is the week of May twenty-fourth, we feel that it would be more appropriate to do the student recognition on May eleventh as presented in your, so it's as, it's here, it's no, it's not, it's not a change from that, it is what's presented there.
Do you have enough, I mean, are all the recognies, all the data and all the student accomplishment and all that kind of good stuff, that's all available?
We'd have all that by May eleventh because again, the semester starts earlier this year than it did last year, so we're fine.
So we would, we would have all of the information to recognize the students?
We'd know who to recognize.
Yes, you would know who to recognize.
Okay. In the past, has it been, has it been done the week of graduation?
I don't believe it's ever been done the week of graduation. It may have, but not in the tenure I've had here.
So this, what's in front of us up to at least June fifteenth, then this is a change, May eleventh and May twenty-fifth, because what, what was on there before was reversed?
Yes. Because as you know, we have to, the board is required to approve the calendar at two different times. According to the Open Meetings Act, you have to do it every, every January. According to the school code, you have to do it every April, so.
Okay. Any?
Have we always had two meetings in May?
No. Pretty much, yes. Because of the recognition meeting.
Okay. And then, of course, the board certainly has options to add meetings as they come up throughout the two thousand ten through two thousand eleven school year. So any other comments? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand ten through two thousand eleven board meeting schedule.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, do you want to do numbers?
Well, I was going to suggest, why don't we go, why don't we do Dr. Ball's report and then we can jump back to the Miller, if that's okay with us.
Yes, fine. I mean.
Because there is actually a Miller family reading night and so a number of parents are making their way from Miller presently. And it's a discussion worth having and worth having parents.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, then, then we will move to the superintendent's report.
First item there, as you see, potentially the career education people are hoping to introduce some legislation in early February that will allow us effectively to levy an additional sum simply to support the regional career centers. Is every district deals with some pretty significant budget cuts. A lot of districts are restricting, for instance, the number of students they allow to go to TCD in our case. And so this would help offset that because it would be money beyond the tax cap. Effectively for us, based on our EVA, it would, EAV, it would be up to about, you know, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which would more than cover our current TCD costs. So in reality, we would probably levy about a half of that and that would cover our needs. This year, for instance, our, our TCD bill was about a hundred thousand dollars because basically we pay tuition by students. So we have about twenty students there. So we pay for them. It's been as high as a hundred and fifty, it's been as low as about eighty. Any questions? If you take a look, the LEND strategic planning document is in front of you. As you are probably familiar, LEND is the Legislative Education Network of DuPage and they are working on trying to, you know, really articulate what their role is, especially in this time of, of real significant change in both regulation and funding, to make sure they advocate well for the school districts in DuPage that are members. If you have any feedback on their strategic plan, let me know and I'd be glad to send it on to them. Another issue that's come up, there are bilingual rules right now that are pretty sweeping in their changes for how ESL students would be served. Would require a lot of changes, particularly serving students in their native language as opposed to English. Districts above a certain size would be required to have an ESL administrator, which for many districts is really becoming a problem because that person not only has to have their administrative certificate, they also have to be fluent in the majority language in that district and then also have ESL endorsements. And so I know a couple of superintendents, for instance, have offered any of their principals, you know, like a five thousand dollar bonus to get that certification so that they could meet the new rules. These rules are presently open for public comment, which will close on February fifteenth. And then at that point, the state board can basically adopt them and they'll become, you know, law through regulation as opposed to the legislature. And one district did the math, for instance, their program costs about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to run, no, excuse me, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to run. And the state agreed to reimburse about a hundred and eighty thousand, but in reality, they got thirteen thousand dollars last year because obviously they're a little late in making some of their payments. They finally got another hundred and some, you know, a hundred and sixty-some thousand or so after the end of their fiscal year, but in reality, the, just this kind of a program is going to cost them six hundred and some thousand dollars in new money to educate the same students. And, and again, with the tax cap in the CPI right now being point one, that's, that's pretty significant.
You, you referenced that, that rules would require significant changes to our ESL and ELL. I mean, so, so speak to the direct impact for us.
Well, the direct impact, Kelly Boss hasn't had a chance to really look in great detail yet as far as what that would be, but one of the things potentially would be that the native language instruction would be required in preschool. So we would have to find somebody who's ESL certified, fluent in Spanish and certified in early childhood. So it would require a new hire, for instance, in our part. For instance, if, if Ms. Boss would leave us, we would have to then, you know, we would be constrained to either replace her as a principal with someone else who had the exact same certification or go out and hire another administrator who did have that certification.
So these are open to comment, these rules are open to comment through February fifteenth. Comments?
You can go to the, the ISBE website and look, you know, they'll have links there for all of their proposed rules. And these would be under bilingual education.
Yep.
Make your comments. They do read the comments, I know that for a fact. Joint PTO meeting, we had a last joint PTO meeting on January twentieth. You know, one of the key topics of conversation there was what can we do to get the PTOs to help us engage parents more at the academic level, especially at the junior high and high school level, as participation falls off at, at that point in time. So that was sort of the main topic of conversation. We asked each of the PTOs to go back and address sort of six different facets of potential parental involvement and then bring them back to our next meeting so we can kind of brainstorm ways to try to improve that because we feel that we don't have really adequate parental parent involvement right now at the high school level.
Who, who normally goes to the joint PTO meeting? Are all of the schools represented?
Yes. Normally you have people from, you know, Miller, Manning, junior high PTOs, band boosters, the athletic boosters, and span sometimes as well.
This would seem to be one of those places where, you know, the Skyward tool, particularly on the parent module, you know, should, should get as, as much focus and leverage as, as humanly possible. You know, I do, my freshman jokes about how often I visit that site and I think as a, as a frame of reference, you know, again, just statistically trying to grow that is an indication that you're growing, a parent being aware of what's going on in their child's academic, in their day and in their, and in their, you know, and in their class schedule. and in their class schedule.
You also have some information of the letter that we sent out to staff regarding cost containment. I have all those materials and recommendations from the staff. I'll, I'll share them with the board along with the administrative team's recommendations. You also have some materials from the Science CAC and also in your orange packet.
Steve, can I, I have some questions on the memo.
Sure.
Can I ask those?
Go ahead.
As I read this, this email, and this was sent to the staff, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're saying now is that this year, our deficit is anticipated to be $528,000, assuming we receive all the money from the state.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I was gonna ask Maureen a question, maybe you can answer this. In her, in her information to us in the, in the binder here, she's talking about how the fact that we have just now received money from, from, from 2009, from the state. And so we have not received like $600,000 from the state yet for 2010. So we just received $500,000. So from what I'm reading and seeing, it sounds like the state's in, in trouble. What is the assumption that we will receive any of this money? In your, in your opinion and in your reading, in terms of getting this money from the state?
As far as are we going to get 100% of the money that we're anticipating, that's anticipated from the state? I can't imagine that we would do that this year because we haven't gotten that in any of the last three years in a timely manner. They've always been late. As, as we speak today, the Career Technology Education Funds that come from the state to the regional education centers, they have received exactly zero of their allocation of funds. And that's a big concern because one of the issues with CTE funding wasn't cut this year when they were trying to balance the state's budget. Because if they had cut it even a dollar, we wouldn't have gotten the federal matching funds from their CTE grants. They required at least the same level of support from the, from the state that we had done previously. So there's a very serious concern on the part of the career centers, for instance. Thus, the legislation mentioned earlier that we may not get any of our state money in a timely manner and we may end up losing some of our federal money because of that. So I don't anticipate that we're going to get all of the money. But from a standpoint of best case scenario, that would be our deficit, assuming we get what we budgeted and what the state has promised to give us.
Okay, so $528,000, that assumes we're going to get all the money from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Which it reads that way.
Okay. And then it says that the deficit would be, would be closer to $750,000, except for the fact that we got working cash investments. So we, so we're better off by $220,000? Right? Okay. And so that, and, and this is where, Dan, jump in here, help me, I'm, I'm trying to learn. Steve, I was gonna ask Maureen. Okay, so we, did we, can we take, did we take that $220,000 then? Is that then, can we transfer that to the education fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that transfers of interest?
That's transfer of interest.
Thanks. Okay, so we can take money from there and put that into the education fund?
Yes.
Can we take more?
No. Not, well, you could take some amount of working cash, but most of that working cash, the actual bonds themselves, have to speak to the projects they were originally sold for. And so, and we've gone through this once already with conversation with playground equipment, is that those bonds have to be used for capital outlay, so they can't be used, for instance, for salaries. That would not, that's not why we sold the bonds, so we really are prescribed from using them for that.
Okay, so this is then interest?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then it says, so then you're, you're stating in here that you anticipate a deficit of 1.6 million for 2010, 2011 unless we make some additional cuts?
That's based on the PMA financial projections from last January, yes. That was their projection.
So if I'm just looking at these numbers, is the 1.6, does that include $528,000? So are, are we saying we have to do $528,000 now and then 1.6? Or are we saying 1.6 and that encompasses the 528?
$528,000 will be the deficit at the end of this school year.
Okay.
The 1.6 million will be the operating deficit for next school year. So we will be.
Provided, provided we make no changes to the infrastructure.
Assuming everything else is, right.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think that's a combination of the fact that we, we will have no tax revenue growth. You know, 0.1 CPI. Combined with regular inflation plus, you know, in, in, you know, I'm not entirely sure what all's in the old PMA model, but I think as a practical matter, we budget somewhere around $1,006,000 or $1,007,000 in state receipts every year. And, you know, as a practical matter, we're, we're gonna lose $600,000, $700,000 of that.
The worst case scenario would be effectively that we don't get our general state aid. That would be an impact of about $600,000 for us total from a standpoint of the fact that right now, the state aid in Illinois is a three-tiered system. Most, most states have a single-tiered system. One way to make up the $992 million deficit the state needs to cover general state aid would be to eliminate those first two tiers. So the flat grant districts that basically get $208 a student, no matter what. And then the alternative funding districts that get some portion of general state aid, including us. And if they just eliminate those two groups, they can to some extent balance their budget, assuming their revenues stay otherwise fluid, you know, and pretty much the same.
You know, if, if you had to sort of big picture and fly over this at, at sort of 20,000 feet, the good news about our district is that 80% or so of our revenues come from local, from, from local sources. Those local sources are reasonably secure. They may not be growing, but they are reasonably secure. There are many other school districts, not so many in DuPage, but there are many others across the state who are, you know, exposed in a far greater level to state funding that, that is just devastating at this point. So I think, you know, as, as one of the meetings that's coming up is a finance meeting, you know, the challenge before us is effectively, by virtue of what's happening at the state, we're going to become a district that supports ourselves far more heavily locally. And the question is just what that looks like and how it unfolds. You know, is it, is it a, you know, is it a reduction in offerings? Or is it, or is it something that we're, we're able to accomplish in revenues? And, you know, it's, it's not going to be an easy conversation or an easy answer and it's not going to be a quick answer either.
You know, I will say that every, every district that I've spoken to, with the exception of one, is planning on making some level of personnel cuts for next year. The, the exception is a very small district that has 13 retirements. So it's almost 10% of their staff is retiring.
Oh, in the, in your orange folder, by the way, there's a Crane's Chicago business that I had seen a couple of weeks ago online. And it's, it's just an article that speaks directly to Illinois, Illinois and several other states. Yeah, the article effectively posits that our state is bankrupt and insolvent, which it is. Which puts on our shoulders the burden of figuring out how to, how to construct and fund our public schools.
You know, Dan, I got to tell you, this is, this, yesterday, there was a roundtable meeting that the mayor has started and it's all the taxing bodies, the mayor's office, the village trustees, the schools, the park district and the library. And this article was actually brought to our attention as well. So, and I guess that's, until I really saw this memo, this didn't really hit home to me. And I've been trying to really learn about all the finances. So what I'm trying to understand is if last year we cut $500,000 roughly, like permanent cuts.
Yes.
And now we're looking at potentially for next year, three times as much. It's, someone tell me, won't this dramatically change our district and what we offer our students? I mean, won't this just, I, I'm sorry, am I, it seems to me like this, we're in like crisis mode here. And I know with all due respect, I know the financial committee is gonna meet in February 2nd, but this personally scares me. This just, and I'm, I'm reading that other districts are having, you know, meetings and they're, you know, reaching out to their community and I, I just, this, am I missing something here? I don't, I don't know. And maybe this will be covered at the financial.
Well, I think it clearly is the premise of, of, of what we need to accomplish at the finance meeting. A million dol-, a million two, a million two against the $24 million operating budget that we have is about 5% of the entire operating budget. 5%. Doesn't sound like much, 5%. 5%. But once you take 5% off of your life, out of your buildings, you will feel it, people will feel it.
Yeah.
It is 5%, it's not 50%. It's not, you know, 20%, but it is 5%. And, and people will feel it. And, and the job in front of us is what, what that looks like.
I mean, the, the big question the board is gonna have to make a decision ultimately, first with the finance committee and then with the board as a whole, is what, what level of cuts do you want to make? We still do have some fund balance. In that way, we're in good shape. You know, Maureen and, and the staff have worked well, I think, over the past five, six years to try to make sure that we have some fund balance. And, you know, we've made a number of changes over the last three years that have pushed our fund balance out, you know, from when I got here, it was to be 2009, we were gonna run out of money, which would have been last year. We're now in the situation, we're gonna run out of money about 2012. And again, if we make some more cuts, potentially we can put that off in 2013. But at some point in time, the board is gonna have to make the decision as far as what level of cuts are responsible, or do they want to go to the voters and ask for more revenue?
Okay, and let me, let me ask, you're, you're saying that we might be able to get out to 200, 2013, but that's with a $1.6 million?
That's making pretty significant cuts.
Okay, so then that leads me to the next question that's in here. There's this talk about, you know, you're, you talk about the increase of the .1. And we knew this last January, right? That this .1 was gonna be there?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess what I'm wondering is, you're absolutely right, that the board has this huge task in front of us. But my concern is, if we are going to dramatically change the way our districts look, shouldn't we be doing what other districts do and holding public meetings or something to that effect? That we, so we can get input from our constituents as to what they want their district to look like? I mean, I know we're gonna also be starting the strategic planning process, but I mean.
I anticipate that after your, your finance committee meeting, one of the, we've, I think we've had this discussion here, is that, and Dan has stated this, that he would want to have some sort of public hearing on whatever potential cuts we would make, very similar to what we did last year, going through that same, same cycle. Ultimately, you know, if you look at what other districts are doing, they're doing very similar things as far as they're trying to solidify what their potential cuts are. They're taking those to their board meetings or the other, you know, and discussing what the potential impact is. And then ultimately, after the board hears public comment and, you know, recommendations from staff and the administration, make some determinations as far as what to do. I think we're gonna follow that exact same process and effectively that's the same process that, you know, if you look at, at all those districts except for one, they're having to make pretty significant cuts this year. Everybody's following fairly similar guidelines.
Last year, I don't recall that we had a pub-, you know, sort of an, an open forum, public meeting, but I think I personally would, would support and, and think that a, given the, the scope and the size and the nature of what's going on and all the other stuff, that a fairly natural outgrowth of our first conversation is to talk about, if you will, the, the palette or the, or the canvas for us and then take that conversation to our community.
I would say last year, there were several conversations about it. It was a significant topic in April, May and June at board meetings.
Yeah, in board me, I just meant in terms of a, more of an interactive opportunity for, for, you know, folks to, to ask questions.
Right, now, because now we're facing much more significant cuts.
It's a much, yeah, yeah, I think it's a much.
But I think when we get, when we have all the information in front of us and we can look at PMA projections and we can plug in some different kinds of scenarios and educate ourselves, that would be the appropriate thing to do first and then, and then bring all the information forward. So I think we're on the right path to answer your question. I, I know the information is scary and we've had this in front of us for, for the last several years. And as Steve said, we've been able to do, to put things in place that have pushed this back further and further. So we've been lucky that way and we'll continue to, to try to do that. And, you know, obviously make whatever decisions we can that, to impact our, our student programs the least. And it's gonna get harder and harder and I think everybody realizes that and I think we've said it at this table enough times. So.
Well, that's, you know, and, and, and thank you, because I, I think that is a good, because I just think we're being faced with, you know, like last year, when we talked about it, we talked about things that, you know, that the teachers and the staff and the administration put together a list for us. But now we're gonna be, you know, it's gonna be huge. And I, I just think, I, I know one thing that was talked about at our meeting yesterday that we were at was that the village has put together a citizens' finance planning committee made up of volunteers in the community. And I guess, I just, I guess I, I wonder how we're gonna do this without having community input. So I appreciate the fact that we're talking about that because this is, these are big, these are big numbers.
And if you recall, like Dr. Ball said, we did discuss it over three, I think it was three months worth of meetings. And, and I don't know if you remember, but I know I received a lot of phone calls and emails from community members and parents about their feelings about the different items that we talked about. And I think that, that that helped our decisions a lot. So I think we could expect a lot of the same again this year.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, if, if we are talking about, you know, close to a million dollars or five, that I think it's important to bring that to the community and I, I just wanted to comment.
I'm sure they'll be at our meetings. They'll be at our meetings.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying public comment at the meeting, I'm saying we should have like a public hearing.
Well, they will be, certainly.
On that, yeah, okay. Okay, that's all, I'm just, I'm commenting on what's in front of me.
Sure, no, I absolutely agree. They'll, they'll be here without a doubt.
Okay, I guess that's, thank you.
Eva, continue then?
Thank you.
Want me to finish the superintendent's report or not?
Sure. Dr. Ball, are you done with your section? I did have a question for you.
Just let me, also attach, you have information from the Science CAC. The civic ran probably about two weeks ago now. There are also materials in your orange folder from the English Language Learners. CAC, CAC, excuse me. If you notice, for instance, it, in science, they're particularly trying to look at, you know, aligning their curriculum and working also with understanding by design. So their, the lesson plans are much more clearly focused on, you know, what the end result is. And that, that's the goal theirs. You also have two Alliance Legislative Updates. You have the original one in your packet and you also have another one in your orange folder that came last Friday afternoon. And then you also have from the meeting that the president spoke about, the financial presentation from the Village of Westmont, basically showing that they're really not in any better financial shape than we are. And articulating they've cut about 13% of their, their staff over the last couple of years.
You're, you're referring to this document we, we received yesterday?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's in your orange folder.
And one of the things that they talked about on the very first page, the village manager talked about was that, one thing they talked about was need to make significant cuts, reevaluate. cuts, reevaluate what we do and how we do things, and personnel were the last to be cut, and I hope that we, you know, we're all in this boat together, so.
Let's remember though, that the village, the village budget is a lot different than a school budget
Oh, yes.
in terms of what personnel means.
Yes.
And, and that's, I think, just to reiterate, that is what the scary thing is that's facing us, so I, you know, there's some comparisons, I think, that are, you know, legitimate, and some that really don't, don't kind of match up very well, so.
Dr. Ball, was there more?
No, then, I'm, I'm finished now.
Okay.
Can I ask you my question now?
Sure.
Okay. At a couple of meetings back, we had talked about the school psychologist position, and I know that there was some information that was discussed about the disparity between the elementary, junior high, and senior high levels, I was wondering if you could clarify that information?
If I remember correctly, what was presented was, we have a full-time psychologist and a full-time social worker at the elementary level for about 650 students, more or less, and at the high school level, we have a social worker and a part-time psychologist, for, you know, more or less 850, 900 students. The piece that was missing out of that conversation was, in addition to the social worker and psychologist at the high school level, you also have two full-time guidance counselors. This year, for instance, and most years, we have two guidance interns who each work three days a week, and, you know, effectively pull, you know, that three-fifths of a caseload as a guidance counselor most of the year, and then also, we have a minority, you know, at-risk mentor at the high school who comes in one day a week to work with very specific groups of students as well. So, the, it's not exactly a, you know, apples and oranges comparison, looking at, you know, one psychologist and a half psychologist, there are many more student service staff at the high school level, in the junior high level, than there are at the elementary level, and in addition to that, we also have a relationship with NCO that comes in to provide some social work groups, et cetera, for us at the junior high.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because after hearing the discussion, I was a little bit concerned, and so I had asked Dr. Ball, and I wanted to make sure that our parents and community members were aware of the information, because I felt much better after I had talked to Dr. Ball and gotten the clarification, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, should we go back to the item under the consent agenda, approval of Miller's school playground bid?
Sure.
Tab number seven in your binders?
You want to?
Well, I was going to ask, Steve, would you mind, go ahead and just speak to the recommendation and your guys' thoughts from the administration's perspective?
You know, Maureen's recommendation, I think, is fairly straightforward, you know, as we've discussed the use of volunteer labor, things like that, you know, there are clearly variables there that there aren't if we simply award the bid to the contractor and have them do all the work. Maureen's strong recommendation is to go to the Kenneth Company, Alternative Two, which would do all of the installation and removal of existing equipment, right, so it's effectively 100% contractor-driven project, and that's her recommendation, that's, it would be $82,248, which is a little over the $75,000, which is budgeted, and is it, she notes there also, right now, we're trying to see if the state will allow us to use some of our A, our R.A. funding to pay for this project. We believe they will, but they haven't approved it yet, so as we speak today, this is still coming out of operating funds, but potentially can come out of that stimulus money.
So, has it been submitted?
It's been submitted, yes, we just haven't heard back from the state.
Do we know how much time that takes?
It's the state of Illinois.
Yeah, okay.
Your crystal ball is probably as good as mine.
So, we can go ahead and approve one of these, and we might get some money back from the state, is that what you're saying?
Well, the federal government would allow us to use our stimulus dollars to pay for this, potentially, you know, other things we're potentially paying for that money, potentially would be elevator work, things like that, mostly ADA compliance kind of things.
Yeah.
So, just, I'm, please.
But have we, have we been promised any of that money yet?
That money is sitting there for us.
Okay.
We just have to then get approval for using it.
This is, yeah, so, this is one of those things, we have the money, we just have to get
We have to specify projects, right, okay.
A couple of sort of premise notes with respect to all this stuff, first, the, the project, I think, as, as board members know, is, was driven largely by the fact that the existing playground at Miller is truly not ADA compliant in any, in, in any way, shape, or form, that there is at least one child, and, and, you know, there, there certainly will be others who, who need access to, to that equipment and to that space. That said, the way we, there was a committee formed at the Miller level that did a fantastic amount of work in terms of identifying a scope, of identifying the kind of equipment and the layout that was, that they'd like to see, included in that committee was, were not just parents, but administration and staff, including Mike, and, Mike Mioros, and, Kelly Boss, and others, I think Linda Clawwater may have participated in some of that.
She did.
And so, you know, as, as a premise, it was a, you know, the, the project was driven around that notion of creating a space that was truly ADA compliant, and as long as you're going to create a space that's ADA compliant, you may as well create a nice space in general. So, with that, because, because for anyone who's visited it, it's a, it's a fairly stark experience today. That said, the bids that were put out were, Mike and, or the committee actually came to us last month, or month before, I forget which, I think it was the December meeting, where they came to us effectively with a community build proposal, entirely community build proposal, where we simply bought the equipment and installed the equipment and used donated labor for everything. The way the bids packages went out, they went out with the scope of work that that committee identified, and then we asked the, the bidders to bid for a base bid, which effectively was a community build project. We then asked them to bid, a base bid, which is a full community build project, plus the additional equipment, because there was some additional equipment over and above, there were like, was it two pieces, or three pieces, or four pieces, three pieces? So, those were the first, you know, base bid and alternate one. Alternate two, what you'll hear us call alternate two, is a full contractor build of that same scope of work. It's a full demo, it's a full removal of all the pea gravel, need a down-to-12-inch, down-to-12-inch base, you know, the underlay for the poured-in-place, for the poured-in-place rubber, all that kind of stuff, it's a full contractor bid, bring the equipment in, put the, put the, you know, nuts and bolts together, and, you know, just have the contractor do it, and that's the number, that's $82,248. At this point, I will note that the Manning, or that the Miller PTO has committed 5,000 of their dollars to this job. And so, by way of reference, Miller is a small school, and that $5,000 is half of their entire treasury, or approximately half. So, their commitment to this project is, is, is very, very sizable, and they have still continued to hold themselves out as willing to work. So, alternate three was effectively alternate to a full contractor bid, alternate three was the same full contractor with the, with the incremental equipment, with those three extra pieces. Alternate four and five are the two alternates that get a little messy, and, and they're, they're worth a conversation in my view, which is a community, a community participation. We would ask the contractors to do all of the demo, all of the psych prep, all of the, you know, sort of footings and everything else, but once the equipment came in, we'd ask for volunteers to come and help install the equipment, they would be supervised by the contractors. That cost, you know, the, the winning bid for that cost, which is not Kenneth Co.
Don't say winning, please say low.
I'm sorry.
Say low bid.
My, my, my apologies.
No problem.
The low bid.
I don't want to confuse anybody.
My, yeah, my, my terrible misstatement, and I apologize for it.
No problem.
The low bid was, i- is $72,275, which is approximately $10,000 less than the full contractor bid. So, if we have enough men and women and people who are of age and can sign waivers and releases, and have appropriate tools and strength, you know, there's a $10,000 savings there. I personally would like to see that happen, but it's conditioned on there being, you know, an appropriate commitment from the, from the PTO to organize that number of people. Additionally, there's an alternate five, which includes that incremental piece, again, those three pieces, and the low bid for that is approximately $3,400 higher, and I know that the PTO, or has been expressed to me by the PTO folks and by the committee, that they would be interested in going out and getting private donations to cover that portion. So, effectively, the only commitment that they, that the, or the commitment that the PTO and, and the committee is asking for, from the district, is to cover the base equipment, and if we looked at alternate four, which is donated help for erecting the equipment effectively, you know, the cost of that would be $72,275, minus the 5,000 committed by the PTO, so the district's piece would be 67,275. And then, you know, my personal proposal would be to follow the wishes of the, of the committee and the PTO, and, and to the extent that they could raise money to fund the additional equipment, that's great, it would be a short fuse to do so, you wouldn't have much time, because there would have to be a contract and orders placed for the equipment, et cetera. So, but I realize that Maureen, amongst others, and, and Mike, you know, I know you would have reservations about that, so I'm going to ask you.
Yes.
Is it okay, can, can I ask Mike to speak to the reservations?
Fine.
Certainly.
Is that, is, I don't want to put him on the spot.
I wouldn't do that.
No?
I wouldn't put him on the spot.
Okay, I won't.
I'll ask, if I could ask, can I ask Dr. Ball a question?
Yeah.
Can you go into the liability issues that may exist if a contractor doesn't do this project?
I have a similar, I have a similar concern.
Well, um...
I'm thinking about our children on this playground.
There are always those concerns, you know, as I spoke to other districts that have done similar work, you know, some have had very good experience using volunteer labor, you know, some haven't, you know, some, the issue has simply been getting the volunteers to really show up and do the work, in some cases, it's been getting them to, you know, follow directions, do the work well, in some cases, they've been very happy with the, the work, you know, clearly, you know, there's the liability issue, we'd have them sign waivers, they clearly wouldn't be eligible for a workman's comp, but, you know, still, if, you know, somebody puts a nail through their hand, et cetera, you know, we're much more liable in that situation than we are if it's a contractor doing it.
But I mean, after the fact, after this playground is, is constructed.
Well, that's where, actually, the contractor bids were, included supervision.
Right.
For the
And, and they'll provide supervision.
Yeah, alternate number four, and I say
All of the alternates.
I understand that, but, you know, without paid professionals doing the work, I just kind of wonder if there's some
I wanted to know, I think, I think I'm on the same line as you, I wanted to know if, even with the supervision, do we nullify the, the warranty?
The salespeople all say no, notice, you know, the salespeople would all, of course, say no, you know, afterwards, if you have a situation where the supervisor goes, you know, they really didn't listen to what I said, therefore, we're going to nullify the warranty, those are clear, I mean, those are potential options, I'm not saying any of them would happen, but those are clearly areas of liability, and thus, Maureen making the recommendation that she made.
Okay.
It's a, this is a hard
Right, I, can I just, I got one more, one more thing I want to throw in there, Dan, if, you know, with your idea of, you know, kind of giving this back to the Miller PTO and having them, you know, come up with a plan for how they're going to get their volunteers and everything like that, basically means we can't really approve anything yet, unless we have that first, if we were to go with option, with alternate four, do you know what I'm saying? Because I, I'm not willing to, you know, commit to alternate four unless I know that that exists.
Can I ask a quick question about, I think you're talking about alternate five, the alternative equipment?
No, I'm talking
Let me ask, Mike, can I just ask you a quick question about the alternate, or you or either the contractors who are back there, if the board would approve alternate four, and then, and I understand that there's a concern with getting this stuff ordered, so it's, you know, in place for the summer, because everybody's ordering their playground equipment at this time of year.
That's correct, yes.
If the board then chose to add the additional equipment from alternative five?
Correct, yes.
Can that be done additionally? Fred, I'm getting the no, it needs to be ordered at the, the same time, or?
As long as the equipment was, was delivered by in the same period, I believe we can get that done, I'm not, is that?
I guess the question to the contractors is, can that be done? Is that a reasonable expectation to come back in, you know, 30 days effectively, on February 23rd, which doesn't give the Miller's PTO much time to raise that money and say, if you have that, you know, done, then the board could commit to adding that additional equipment?
I'm sure we've worked with the contractors on there, I know we've worked with Kenneth Company before, I'm sure they'd be very cooperative, I'm sure we could work something out, just mean, the inconvenience to the students on there, if it's still during the school year, would be the only issue, I think, that we might
Hopefully, be able to be doing it during the summer, but it would be, green up would be the
Correct, yes.
If, if
If we use
The recommendation that Dan is recommending is, is approved, then it would be with green up as opposed to Maureen's recommendation, which is alternative two, which would go to Kenneth Company.
Yes, correct.
Because again, the, the bids are very tight in a couple of places.
Yes, sir.
Well, can I add, I think, Linda, and, as your concern about whether we approve this tonight, whether we have volunteers to do this?
Well, not
Is that what you're?
Um, no, much more specifically, as, kind of what Dan was kind of laying out, that he would, he would look back to Miller to provide for us.
Talking about for the, the additional
You're talking for the, for the extra money, for the extra equipment.
Not the, not the money, the manpower.
The manpower.
And the, you were talking
No, I mean, Mike, I think Mike Graham was up a couple of months ago, and, and I know from, you know, direct, you know, sort of conversations, obviously, my wife is involved in, in the PTO as well, and, and so, I know that the commitment exists.
Right.
And at a certain level, I, I boil it down to, the decision, I think, that faces us is simply this, and it's a $10,000 decision. If we're prepared to, you know, to, you know, go forward on the basis that Miller's PTO and playground folks will provide the labor necessary to effectively install and erect the equipment, under the supervision of the contractor, and in, with, with appropriate waivers and everything else, then my, I would suggest that we, we approve alternate four with the, with a fairly short window for, for, for the, for the PTO to go out and raise $3,500, $3,500 or so, to get the three extra pieces of equipment. And effectively, that we, that the risks we're taking are the risks associated with, A, allowing the community to participate in the erection of the, of the equipment, and B, the, you know, the risk that that turns out well. And that we, and that we rely on their representations that it will turn out well, because they certainly have represented that, there's any number of them here, including out in the hallway, and I especially appreciate all of them showing up after their reading night tonight, I know that there is a robust commitment to this project.
Okay, so then I misunderstood what you said about going back to the PTO to find out how they would get their manpower together.
Yeah, well, I'm, you know, I was more focused on, you know, the extra
How many volunteers would it really entail?
Good question, I don't know, can somebody answer that, out there? Twenty or thirty? I see contractors shaking heads.
I work for the Kenneth Company, and in my opinion, this is a really complicated play piece. Yes, you can do this type of work with volunteers, it's not the type of thing that you're going to do with a bunch of people who kind of come and want to spend a little time helping out and then go home. It's a complicated, large play piece with some decks that are very high It's a complicated, large place with some decks that are very high in here. There's a slide on that, that's several hundred pounds, and, you know, putting that into place and getting it in place, holding it there, putting the bolts in, attaching all this, isn't something that, in my opinion, is gonna be real easy for a bunch of volunteers to have done. Also, as far as the ten thousand dollars cost, the difference in the price, there is supervision costs, I believe greenups' price is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
We did include those when we look at where the numbers came out.
We did.
Right. And they're, they take the price from being about sixteen hundred dollars difference to being about a thousand dollars difference when we consider the supervision.
And, and, you know, I guess, I just wanted to get to the, to the question, which is, how many, how many, how many guys would it take to actually do that? And I heard a number twenty to thirty, which is a sizable range, and how long would those, how much? How many hours are those twenty or thirty people working? Because clearly you'd, yeah, I mean, you'd proffered a bit at that level.
Twenty to thirty guys putting in six hours, I don't think you need a group of guys to come out working an hour a day, everybody, but if you're still looking at.
You know.
You're looking at, you're looking at two days, there's forty-five holes.
Well, the holes, I mean, as I understand, though, that the installation is, certainly doesn't include the holes, but, and for the board, and I don't want to sort of sidetrack the conversation, because it's a, it's a decision that we have to make about risk, about risk.
Well, I would like to just jump in here just a little bit, just from what I know. I think what we've heard from the Miller PTO, that they're very determined here, they're putting their money, which is half of their PTO funds, which that tells me that this is a high priority for their PTO. You know, I know for a fact that I belong to the Manning PTO, and I know that a number of Manning parents said that, you know, this is our community and we would like to help out as well, because, you know, we're a small district. And, you know, of course, I don't have names and numbers, but I know that it was talked about at the meeting, that there would be people volunteering. And to me, I think, if you're talking six or eight hours, unless I mistake, I think this town, we could do that in a heartbeat. And I, I just, I think the, I'm also very concerned about the liability issues, but I think if we're talking volunteers, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. So I think, I would, I guess I would have to agree with Dan, and I guess what's in front of us tonight is, are we going to look at this amount of?
Do you have something further?
Excuse me, when I said sixty dollars, I meant two days.
Okay.
Good point.
I would like to suggest that we move forward and take Maureen's recommendation as, as she has it here, and go with that.
I'm inclined to go the same, the same route, especially in light of the potential A, RRA funds, kind of making the difference rather small with the, with the donation of the Miller PTO. I just am, I am really concerned about the risk. I really, you know, want to support the playground, I want to see it happen, but I'm not gonna pretend to know what it takes to build a playground. And, you know, I believe in volunteerism in a big way, obviously, but I'm just, I'm concerned about the liability.
Well, I'll add, I mean, from the notes that I took before the meeting, I said I liked alternative four because of the community involvement, and I think that is, when you talk about supporting your schools, having parents involved in something that's very hands-on like that, and that they can point to and say, you know, "I helped do that," or "I helped make that happen," I think that's very important for your community, not just the fact that they put together or assembled, you know, a piece of playground equipment, but that they work together, and that may lead down the road to them working together on other academic supportive measures for our schools, and I think that's a nice opportunity, so.
I actually like Maureen's, her recommendation as well, the hundred dollar, not the hundred, the hundred pound item, the having to stand on decks.
Yeah, that's the one.
The liability bothers me a little bit there. I appreciate that they, that Miller wants to be part of this, but it concerns me that this is complicated, the words that he's using tonight.
I guess I would have to say that I think if the end result is our, our school playground becomes ADA compliant and our elementary students get the equipment they need, I certainly can back alternate two as well, and I would think that the Miller PTO would probably like that as well.
Kathy? Miller mom?
Well, I have to tell you, I'm listening to both and I, and I fully support the project, obviously, and, and I, I really appreciate the volunteers who want to do the work, and I really understand their sense of wanting the ownership, and I'm really torn, but the liability scares me a little bit too, so.
Maybe we could find something else for the volunteers to do.
For me, it's really this, for me, it really is this, and I can, I can go either way, I'm happy to pursue the project in any event. But if I have to boil it down to what it is for me, it's that I'm buying a ten thousand dollar insurance policy. I don't know that that's a bad decision, it's a ten thousand dollar decision, and we've agonized over much more, and so we've spent, I think, probably an appropriate amount of time at least talking about this one, so.
Next up will be the Manning Playground, I understand, right, Mr. Sullivan? That's what we'll be talking about next.
But, yeah, I think, and.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm prepared to take the risk, but that's, I understand folks who, who are not.
Mr. Graham has asked to talk, he is the representative from the Miller PTO who brought this to us, and I suppose we could hear him for a second here?
Thank you very briefly, thank you very much for all of your support. I'm wondering if the commitment is eighty-two thousand, and I certainly appreciate the concern of liability of.
Minus five.
Minus five, for the volunteers to do everything. I'm wondering if there's a way to work with the contractors to have five thousand dollars worth of volunteer labor come in, just man-hours, pulling, you know, pieces to the right spots and being more assistive, allowing us to get the additional components. And the reason I'm asking is that the additional components weren't pie in the sky, wouldn't it be great if?
Right.
They were value engineered out of the plan, because we had a commitment to the school district to keep the costs as low as possible. So, those alternates aren't add-ons, they're actually things that were removed from the plan to keep costs out. So I'm wondering, with commitment for labor, I wonder if there's a way to work with the winning contractor to allow us to value engineer that labor by having some of it be volunteer? Just something.
I'm trying to think through the, I'm trying to think through the bid process and the scope of what it is, and I mean, the contractor could clearly just say no, and we're in no standing to do anything about that, because that's the way the bid was articulated. You know, there's.
Maybe it's a matter of just agreeing that you'd work in good faith effort with the contractor in hopes of allowing that to happen, and if they say no, that so be it, and then I have a couple of weeks to find another five grand.
Which would be the date that you would need to have that commitment to me in order for me to put it forth to the board on the twenty-third.
For, for the ordering of the parts?
Yes. If we would be able to order the parts then in February twenty-third meeting, which would be our next regular meeting.
Those four pieces, right?
For that alternative.
The alternative pieces, yeah.
Three weeks to raise the money, actually, that.
Or, or, we, I get the five thousand dollars worth of man-hours, labor.
That would, again, in terms of reopening the bid.
Right.
We don't want to, that they can't be committed to that.
I don't anticipate that being a legitimate option, but we could surely ask. I don't foresee that they would come forward and say, sure. Well, again, they have, they have the same issues with liability that we would have, you know, I mean, it's, you're asking them to take their employees, and, you know, now every one of their employees potentially is a supervisor, what happens if their employee gets injured or, you know, I mean, similar concerns.
All right, well, thank you everyone for your support, really appreciate it.
You, and the rest of the staff and the Miller folks that are here, as well as the Manning folks that are here as well, thank you all very much. I had asked to pull this, so, and I know Kathy, you had suggested that we bring a motion to approve alternate two, as Maureen suggested.
So are you doing it?
I suppose, you know, we'll go with that, but I will ask, at the very least, before we finalize, actually, what I'd like to do, maybe we do this the other way, do we approve alternate three, and if they can scurry up the dough for the differential between alternate two and alternate three, then, then everything goes forward as alternate three, but if they can't scurry up the dough, then it goes forward as alternate two?
You could, here, here, the issue with that, if you approve alternate three, contingent on, you know, getting X amount of money from the PTO, we really can't order anything until the PTO has reached their timeline, because the way, you know, because you've approved three dependent on.
Yes.
Whereas if we approve alternate two, we can go order that tomorrow, and the equipment starts to come here, and then the other pieces, at least according to Mike, and I'm sure we'll double check if there's an issue there, we could add those on, you know, at February twenty-third, and at worst, we have three extra pieces that come a little late.
Okay.
I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, and then the contractor's cleared, he knows, he knows how to get started.
Then I guess let's vote on alternate two.
Okay.
I move to approve the Miller Playground Equipment Bid as presented.
As alternate two.
Alternate two.
Alternate two.
In the form of eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars to Kenneth Company. I would ask you to amend it to, like that.
Judy, we have to do a roll call on that?
Yes. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
And I think this would probably be a good idea, since we don't have another meeting till February twenty-third, and again, since this has been brought to us and since we do have the money, that could I suggest that we form the same type of committee that has been asked of us tonight, of Manning, to have the same process done to check the ADA compliance at the, at the Manning Level Two. So can we approve that committee?
You're saying we have money for this? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, we have money for this.
Well, I don't, I don't know what we're, you know, I mean, I think, I think it's entirely worth.
I don't know how this money even got thrown in, quite honestly.
It was, it was on the front page of the budget that we approved in September twenty-second, but having said that, the more important question to me is, should the Manning people have an opportunity to look at their playground? Absolutely.
There you go.
That's what, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I said, I said to form a committee to look at their equipment, to check and see if it's ADA compliant, that's what I'm asking. Are we in agreement?
Yeah, I don't know that that's something we need to vote on.
I don't know, we need a motion, I think we just.
Right, that's what we didn't know.
We're supposed to do it.
Right.
Diana's here, I'm sure, she'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, maybe Thursday.
Okay. Enjoy your equipment. Okay, now, let's see, where are we? Finance, are we gonna, oh, wait, board reports, board reports. Finance Committee?
We're meeting February second at three-thirty in the Manning Community Room, as I understand it. I look forward to the exciting hootenanny.
All righty then.
And that's, that's an open meeting?
Yes, it is.
Right, Dan? Okay, okay.
Spectators invited.
Okay. Westmont Junior High Renaming Committee, I think there's a meeting coming up?
There's actually a meeting, I think, twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, okay.
The junior high.
Okay. So you might have more.
Policy Committee is meeting also.
Okay, but the junior high renaming is January twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe you'll have some, okay, and then the Policy Committee?
It's meeting on February ninth at four o'clock, and where are we meeting, Dr. Ball?
The Manning Community Room.
Thank you.
February ninth, at what time was it?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Okay, anything else in that area?
Yes, I'd like to bring something up. In light of where we are currently in the school year and in light of what needs to happen with the Finance Committee, I am suggesting to this board that we hold off on moving forward with the strategic plan for various reasons, but I think that my, my number one reason is just the timing, and I think that if we were to start the strategic plan now and start getting, doing whatever we need to do with surveys and community together, we're gonna find ourselves in June and July and August on a, on a holding pattern with information that is either gonna get lost or not carried through. Meetings won't be happening in the summertime, and so I'm suggesting that we postpone all of this until August, and start this in August and get the ball really rolling with this next school year. And I was just wondering how everybody else, if anybody else was having those thoughts. And I really hate to invest the money with her coming down here next month when we're really not ready to roll.
Do we know if Dr. Hanson would, we haven't paid her anything yet?
No.
Am I right?
She's signed a contract, but we haven't.
Okay.
But it doesn't, I don't believe, have a, you know, a time on it.
It does make a lot of sense, I hadn't thought about it, but, you know, it does take like an entire school year to accomplish the whole thing, and the continuity, I think, is really significant when committees are meeting, to talk about the various strands, so I can, I can see your point.
If I may interject, I would just say that until May, when we have some firm idea about what the state budget is really gonna look like, and we may not have a firm idea in May, but, you know, historically, we have a good idea of a budget in May, if that's not the, you know, that's gonna have a big impact, whether or not we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar, you know, deficit, or a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar deficit, or, you know, a million dollar deficit. So I think, to some extent, it makes some sense to wait until there's some more clear direction from the state as far as what their, their funding is going to be for us.
I think that's probably a good idea. Thank you.
Good with holding off on this, the budget conversation is gonna be a difficult conversation. So, the strategic planning conversation is, is, is something that deserves an appropriate level of focus and attention from everybody, the distraction of a, of a big budget conversation is clearly gonna be noise that surrounds that conversation, so thank you for the suggestion.
So I will contact Dr. Hanson and let her know that you will not have a meeting on the fourth.
I just want to say that I think, you know.
Is there something we can do in May to kind of put it on our calendar for us to be prepared for her meeting with her, or no?
I, I think really until we know what the state budget is gonna be like and define, you know, the Finance Committee makes some decisions about, you know, what level of deficit spending they're comfortable with.
Okay.
Which is really the conversation, because we don't make cuts until you determine how much you're willing to deficit spend. If you like a lot of red ink, we won't cut anything, you know, but those decisions have to be made first, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think that, you know, maybe as a board, we could plan on probably meeting like the end of July, early August, so that as the school year, you know, gets. year, you know, gets going, that we could maybe start to do our work. Maybe we can meet with Dr. Hanson then, do our work, so that we can get the timeline set and, you know, get our process going, and know what we all need to do to get everything going as soon as the school year gets going.
Joel, did you?
Yeah, I guess that seems reasonable to me.
Okay, so we'll hold off till sometime in August, till late July, Kathy?
I like August, especially with the late start. We have all that time now.
Okay, so, the next item then, is there any other policies? I mean, any other committees? Finance, are we gonna?
I'll answer your questions if you have any.
Okay.
I know a few of you, if you've had questions, have contacted Maureen, and we've given the answers to those, so I don't know if you have any questions on attachment F1 at all, your all the non-personnel statements. If you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them in her absence.
Okay, then, having her, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills for the month of Janu, are we there?
I don't hear any questions.
Okay, nothing, not any, okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills for the month of January 2010, as presented in attachment F4 in the amount of $1,621,697.34. Roll call, please.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call.
Mrs. Lubek?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other public comments this time? Okay, I just have one quick thing. I just want to just read something or congratulate Mrs. Mary Roth, kindergarten teacher at Manning, who applied for and received a $3,000 technology grant. And she entered and won the Technology Award to pilot a new writing/reading program. Take that. This is a supplemental program that will add new and exciting adventures to exploring reading in the Literacy Center. So congratulations to Ms. Roth, and Manning, and our students. And anything else? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, and to consider requests for proposals for general legal counsel. So moved. Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Lubek?
Yes.
And there will be a vote. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are here to approve a law firm to serve as general counsel for District 201. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the law firm of Hodges-Rozzy for providing general legal counsel for Community Unit School District 201. We need a roll call, approval.
So moved.
So moved. A roll call?
Ms. Lubek?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Charleston?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
So the motion is carried that Hodges will serve as general counsel for District 201. Anything else?
I have a question about the news release. In the past, you've always signed them with your name, and this news release didn't have your signature on it, so I was just curious if the news release about the...
Because I didn't write it.
I wrote it.
You wrote it?
Mm-hmm.
You wrote the press release?
Mm-hmm. And I asked Dr. Ball to send it out. Yes.
Okay. Is that underneath, that's usually his superintendent's job to do. I'm not sure...
What I did was I wrote it to Stephen, I asked him to let me know what his thoughts were, because I didn't see anything coming out on that.
Okay.
So I did ask, I asked to have that put out.
So then, as that is a directive, that should have come from the entire board?
Writing a press release?
No, making sure a press release is done. I think that's one of the job descriptions of the superintendent.
But the superintendent didn't do it.
Okay, so...
His point is that a directive to the superintendent like that should come from the whole board.
Thank you.
I think, am I, is that what I get from what you're saying?
Yes, that is exactly correct.
So...
Okay.
And...
I know, but...
I know you know, but so what? I don't get it.
Because tonight is the first night of televising board meetings, and I think the constituents should know about that, so.
It didn't seem, I mean, it was something that was already voted on, and it was just kind of a factual release, so...
I understand, but press releases should come from the superintendent. That is his job.
If it's from the district, if it's from the board, it's appropriate that it can come from the president. I don't see, is there, does anyone know of a policy that forbids that?
Yes, there is a policy. We have a policy.
Let me know which one it is. I think we should at least be able to see it before it goes out.
Okay, then you know what?
For all of us.
Maybe what we can do is, we can address that at the policy meeting that's coming up. If you're saying it's in the policy, we could certainly do that.
Or you could just agree to, like, share that with us before you do it on your own.
Certainly.
That would be great.
That would be great, okay. Just for your information, it's Policy 810.
Okay.
That references that the superintendent should create the press releases. And then we may want to revisit Policy 2110 on the role of the president, just for review.
I agree. I agree.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is closed.